So, I think we couldn't get ...
Hmm?
Okay. Does that make all the difference?
All set?
No.
It's too loud, because what you hear is coming through his headphones. That's power, baby. Because we don't have volume control, they do.
We don't.
Alright, you're on, Betty.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, Golden Board of Selecting of October 6, 2014. And it's about 6:20. We'll ask everyone to stand for the political allegiance, please. Are we going to get that noise back?
Republican allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we can approve warrants after we listen to the Water Commissioners, Commissioner Sheehan, and will that like to address us about David Polkari? Okay, alright, so you have somebody that can fill Bruce's slot until the next election, right? Yeah, yeah, Bruce did a lot of good work for-
The gentleman has very good qualifications.
He does?
He lives in town.
Good. He will, in the spring. Very good. Exactly. Did he serve on any other boards in town? His name sounds so familiar.
I believe he may have been on storm water management, maybe?
Yes, I believe you are correct.
Yep, yep.
Very good. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11. And we'll have to have a roll call vote of both boards to appoint David Polkari to fill a vacancy. And we did accept Bruce's recent resignation, correct?
Yes.
We did.
And thanked him for his work. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept David Polkari from Wood Street to the Water Board, Water Commissioner.
And I'll second that motion.
Until the next annual election.
Till the next annual election.
Which we may.
In May 4, 2015.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye, yes.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Demore, yes?
Gorski, yes. So, it's unanimous. They came forward to offer to do this for us. You did that nicely, with nice transition, thank you. Anything else you guys need to talk with us about? How's everything going, good? It is, it's good. Time to catch your breath and-
Yes.
Havel has a problem, you see, numerous calls about the sewer smell-
Yep.
And it's with the Havel plant. Because of the density of the, sometime we have fog and mist, and then it just keeps percolating. I was down Main Street today, and was on School Street the other day.
Okay.
I thought my son pictures-
I know.
We have a problem, it was just actually there the other day, a problem with the adjuster, so they don't know how they're going to fix it, it's a problem.
How long do you think it's been going on?
At least a month or so, anyway.
I would say.
Okay, because I was driving along the river, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, the river doesn't smell very-"
I'm curious, what's an adjuster? I mean, do you know-
I'm actually, I'm not sure.
I think what I heard-
I should work at the plant, but I have no idea. The gentleman I talked to wasn't very knowledgeable, and as you're driving out of the plant, it's tough.
So, they are working on it, though?
I believe, that's the case.
I read an article in the-
It has released a letter.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it was in the paper.
It was in the paper.
Okay, it was in the paper. But they weren't working on it.
Were we getting calls here at our water department? Oh, we were, okay.
Havel certainly has one of the best-
People from Bradford actually were in the paper today, and they said, "Well, you know, after 68 years, we're moving, because we can't stand the smell anymore." So, I didn't know the history, so right away that said, "To me, that must be going on for a long time."
You know, sometimes the farmer, when he was a-
I remember, the fertilizer, remember? It used to be a time we just had to put up with that, yeah.
For about two weeks, and that would go away, yeah.
So, maybe they shouldn't sell so quickly.
I know, they should, property values will be down if they don't get it straightened out. Sell this market.
Okay, thank you both for coming in and taking care of that for us.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, well done.
When David comes in someday, would you have him come in and say hi to us, so we know who he is, Jack?
Yes, he's at our meeting.
Oh, don't we run for cards?
No.
Oh, okay, so two years, yeah, sorry.
Just, hey, that's all, yeah, exactly. Very good.
Can you show the Water and Sewer Commissioner?
It's-
Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer, yeah, the board is a representable, okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Alrighty.
Water and Sewer Commissioners, okay. And we've got the, in five minutes, do you want to just do the payroll-
Yeah, let me do the warrants, yeah, that's a great idea.
We've got five minutes before our next-
A little housekeeping here, I'm going to do the warrants, the payroll warrant is the first one, 15-15, for a total of $131,198.70. Do I have?
Second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain on the payroll warrant, thank you.
Deduct warrant, 15-13A, that's 15-13A, for a total of $24,783.25. Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last is the bill warrant, number 15-15, for a total of $260,173.11.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, terrific.
We did approve the property use permits, there were several on our desk in our other office. You sign them?
Mm-hmm, yes. I went through them and signed them in.
There are no bills submitted from Bagnell School, Nancy?
No.
Okay. Winter Rapid, what is some-
It's the thing for-
Is that what we've got right here?
Yeah, the road commissioner.
Okay, we're going to review and vote to sign the Winter Rapid Recovery Road Program, a reimbursement request prepared by the Road Commissioner regarding state funding from the 2014 Pothole and Winter Recovery Program to repair potholes and other damages caused by recent severe winter weather. And we have that in front of us, and I need a vote to do this. Do I have a motion to do this for Robert Akalian?
I'll make a motion to accept the Road Recovery Road Program reimbursement request from our Road Commissioner, Robert Akalian. If you give a dollar a minute?
As a discussion item, the total expenditures for the program is $32,036. This is available funding from the, this is funding that's available from the 2014 Pothole and Winter Recovery Program.
It was a one-time event, past winter, because remember how bad it was? The roads were-
This is just a reimbursement.
Yeah.
So, we had spent that money, now we need to reimburse it, okay. So, it's a line item transfer.
It's like a chapter 90.
Oh, chapter 9, okay, that's fine.
Do we all sign this, Nancy?
Yes, where the, on the side where the arrows are.
Have we, we have a motion on the floor?
Yep.
Alright.
A second, please?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and we'll sign the document this evening.
Well, our friends from the library are next on the agenda. Good evening.
You're always welcome to come in unless the executive says. Why not on TV?
Just open up another channel, that's all.
Get a bigger audience.
Hello. Look at this slide, Nancy, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi Daddy, how are you?
Good, how's everybody, good? Looks like you have perfect attendance.
We try, I think we're shy.
You are? Okay. Good group. Is the interim director joining you?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Momentarily.
Okay, very good. Alright, we'll wait for him. Has all of Phil been delivered to the Bagnell School, or is that happening for the, Greg had told us they had access, and we were going to do-
Well, almost something they were bringing, was it?
Yes, loan, yeah, loan, yeah. Is that, is that there, or coming in?
I don't know, I believe it.
Is it there?
I believe it's all in-
It's all out of the middle school, so it's got to be there.
Okay. We probably should talk to John about-
Yes.
The next step.
I am.
Hello?
Good evening.
How's everybody? Good, good, thank you. Right, why don't you all introduce yourselves for the listening and watching public. Hi, Emery.
Hi, Snyder.
Hi, Snyder.
I'm Laura.
Elizabeth Martin.
Very good.
We have one more?
Yes, one more coming in the back door, the wrong door, Laurel. You'll have, have you got a chair, Laurel?
Yep.
Good, okay. Alright, would you like to tell us what you would like to do, and what we can help you with?
Sure. We would like to bring three items by you for your approval. The first one, approving the hiring of Megan Brown as library assistant at $10 an hour for 15 to 18 and a half hours a week. Would you like me to do all three?
Sure, Megan's worked for us at this point, right? Approve, how many hours did you say?
15 to 18 and a half.
18 and a half. And what was her title before?
She was a library page.
Page, okay.
For six years.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you give us the three of them, please, at one time?
And we have the offer letter. Actually have the offer of the company.
Okay.
Great.
You want to do one at a time, is that right?
We can listen about all three, and then we'll go back one at a time.
Sure, thank you.
We don't make a commitment without hearing about the others.
Nancy, do you need a copy of this?
I don't, no. Of the letter, no, I don't.
We'll give you ours, Nancy.
Okay.
She can pass mine over to her, I'm also, I read it.
Bill, okay. Okay.
That's okay, thank you.
Second person.
The second item is approval for adding a second library assistant position, again at $10 an hour for up to 15 to 18 and a half hours a week.
Have you identified a person for that?
We do have a candidate that we have in mind.
You say that former, or is it somebody that's on staff now?
No.
No, a new person, okay, okay.
That we found in the interviewing process for, position for Megan is being moved forward
Oh, very good. Good.
Of course. What's your third request?
Third request?
I'm just so curious. As long as it's not a new library building, we'll be fine.
Okay. Promotion of current library assistant to senior library assistant at $11 an hour. Well, she is currently making $10.61 an hour, and this would also, she is currently working 15 to 18 and a half hours a week.
Yeah, we'll continue those hours.
And for the record, the person in question is who?
Lauren Towler.
You spell the last name for me?
T-O-W-L-E-R.
Okay.
I'm not sure if the way of the first ever is.
It is, okay.
And we just want to remind you that all three of these positions are not benefit eligible, so we're saving.
On that piece, okay.
We have discussed this among ourselves, as well as with the finance director, and she approved that the salaries and that the budget would be able to cover all positions, and there will be no increase in wages except for townwide employee cost of living.
So, this cannot be done within your budget at this time? It does.
Yes.
Well, I'm glad the finances are there, but you folks seem very excited about this. That's good.
We are?
So, tell us, what's going on, what's exciting, what's going on at the library?
Well, I mean, the library continues to offer a variety of services, you know, from children's programs to the large print collection growing, that, you know, we basically are meeting the needs of the community in the sense that we are providing them their material. And in addition, it's just been such a, I've been here since July 1st, it's been such a warm community connecting with the staff, it just, it feels very, it's a very comfortable, you know, arrangement, and this just would, you know, secure not only the folks that are there, but also, you know, meet the need of allowing us to grow both opportunities, collections, do all of the skill sets. We have a wide range of things that need to get done, and one of the assessments that I've made is who does what, and it falls into the, this would allow for everything to get done, and, you know, continue to serve and grow all of the services, collection material that we have.
I have that up. And we believe in your packet, there should be a chart of libraries' hours, and we've shown you from 2008 until the present, the number of staff that we've had on, and the number of hours, and we just want to show you how this would benefit us, that Thomas can say.
Just went by it, Joe.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's this one? Yes. Is this chart here?
Yep.
So, you can see, Tom can explain this as well, that, you know, at prime library operating, you know, is about 173 hours, and then we're, right now, down to less than 160. And then by adding these two positions, the third came, brings us just about back up to where we were.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been, since I have been here, I've been operating on the 160-hour a week schedule, and although we get everything done, it's a scramble in many occasions. In fact, I'm actually leaving here to go back to the library, because we have a program going on, and we're, you know, we have only one person at the desk. And that's, we have a busy night there, this is a typical, good example of why that, you know, increase would bring us back to the, you know, operating that was before I came here, and I think, you know, I'm sure would be very beneficial to all parties.
Absolutely.
I just, I'm just amazed, you know, you look at the libraries at Merrimack and West Newbury, and the regional school library system, and then we've got Havel, if you look at that as if there was competition, and these were businesses, your, our organization here, our little library's still growing, and you're hiring to that, so that's exciting news. Very commendable to all of you for doing such a great job, it's a wonderful institution.
It is, a lot of enjoyment for families.
Congratulations on that, awesome.
I'll do a good job.
On the internet and Facebook, also, competition, you think about it, right? I've read articles over the years that libraries are going to be defunct, well, maybe, but not in Groveland, that's great news.
Well, I've been well in Groveland.
But we'll just grow with the times.
Yeah. Good for you. Exciting.
So, I see no reason not to-
What's that?
Support this.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposals that were forth by the staff of the library, the board, and the interim director, as stated. Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we should thank you for all you do. Thank you. Bill and Joe, there's some correspondence before us tonight that I think you both have read, and-
Let me talk about it.
Have prepared to-
A little bit of background for the public, there was a dispute between two residents that was on, let's see, that was September 8th, when that, when that was an agenda item between Mr. Ryan and Mr. Greenwood, and I had asked permission of the board to possibly mediate a discussion, but that didn't happen, and instead, what we have here are two letters where we're asking both parties to provide some consideration to each other in terms of making some changes, so that they can resolve their issue. We do not have jurisdiction, this is a civil matter, but we're just asking our neighbors to take some steps, so that they can hopefully resolve their issues, and we're going to do that by delivering these letters, these are public documents, if anybody needs copies, you can always make a request to Nancy Lewandowski, and I'm in favor of sending these off, one to Mr. Greenwood and one to Mr. Ryan. And Betty, you've recused yourself from this issue.
Yes, I did, because of-
As you're a client, a customer of Mr. Greenwood.
Right, and the investigation that had gone on was done by my, a family member.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, I just felt it was best that I not participate in that.
So, with, so that this will be a letter that will be sent by the Board of Selectment as represented by myself and William Dunn.
Yeah, I had, Mr. Ryan had come to me and wasn't satisfied with the last meeting that we had with him and Mr. Greenwood, so that's why I was making a suggestion, if we draw up these letters and try to put out a friendly recommendation, and get it resolved, hopefully, and make it clear that it is a civil matter, and it's not a town or Groveland matter, I think that Joe and I would probably love to sign it and try to put this thing to bed.
Yeah, good.
And I'm all for it.
Well, thank you, that's-
Hopefully, we'll have some goodwill come forward if there's a-
Well, maybe we can set some precedent, too, people are in dispute, and we can maybe get them together, one way or another, either by mediation, or by, in writing, or some combination. It's amazing, when people talk to each other, what happens.
Shall they vote on sending this out, Nancy?
You don't need to, you just sign it.
Okay, just, just- Sign it, okay.
I already signed it.
You did, you didn't-
Oh, no, not the original.
You didn't send it to the original. It's two, one for Rick and one for Joe.
Great. There's another correspondence item, I'm on the, for the public, I'm on the cable and TV board, and last week, there was a breakdown of our ability to transmit on Channel 9, an important meeting, so what I did is I sent an email to our technician, and he responded by giving me a very extensive technical explanation as to what happened. I won't, I won't read this, but I can tell you that the, the core of this was that Comcast accidentally severed our transmission lines last week, and that's what caused the meeting to go on without any coverage on Channel 9+, due to a compounding effect of issues, it wasn't recorded either. So, the good news is, I have this email that is available for anyone who wish to get a copy of it, you can certainly send an email to Nancy Lewandowski and get a copy of it, it's pretty detailed. The technician also went on to making some really good suggestions on also how we can respond, some procedural changes as to how the cable and TV technicians can respond when there is a failure. Totally unexpected, like I said, the root of it was an accidental severing of our transmission lines, a physical problem, and that created a domino effect of other issues that just prevented us from having it aired live, and also even recorded. So, this is a great response, it's going to set some internal policy in the cable and TV board, also as to how to respond to failures of equipment, or the technology, and I commend Chris LaCory for putting this together, and some of it, I don't even understand it, it's so technical, but he seems to have figured it out, and this will be an agenda item when the cable and TV board will meet again, so that we can review some policy on how to respond to, hopefully, we won't get too many issues like this, but how to respond to any breakdown of equipment. We've made a very large investment, and of course, people now are gotten used to checking out our meetings a little bit more frequently, and being able to hear us, and that's an exciting development, and things do break down from time to time, and I think we're going to have a very good response rate based on this experience, so if you do talk to Chris, please offer our, my congratulations to him for responding so quickly and so technically well, and understanding what the problem was, and what needed to be done to fix it, so, and obviously, we're on tonight, problem's been fixed.
Very good, thank you. I had no idea what had happened, we weren't receiving any TV coverage.
Right.
Thank you. So, we've taken care of what we needed to, what Nancy had provided us with, and are we, Selectmen's time, I guess that's where we are?
Yep.
Joe, did you go to a meeting down at the school, maybe a couple of Thursdays ago?
Yes, I did, thank you for reminding me, yes, I did.
Okay, because Greg had called me about it, and I wasn't able to get there.
Yeah, I was not sure if I could go, that's why I asked, maybe you would go with our-
Was that the same night as another meeting?
Yeah, this was the Regional Finance Advisory Committee, which is the one Board of Selectmen from each town, the finance directors, Denise was there, the business manager, and also the superintendent, and this is an advisory committee, it basically is focused on the needs of the regional school system, and we basically went through- And we basically went through, first of all, we took a tour of the facilities, the, the new tract that's being built and the fields. So that was exciting to see. That's well on its way to being completed on time. And then the other thing is we, we began a discussion and a review process for putting together an advisory group to begin studying the high school, meaning that we're going to be approaching wheat, the region, a regional entity, the school system, is going to be putting together a proposal to approach the state for money to probably renovate, not build a brand-new high school, but renovate the school. This is a multi-year project. And so the approach we're going to take is meet over the next several Thursdays in the next, course of the next couple of months or so, and begin putting together a proposal that will encompass what the school wants to accomplish educationally and what type of building we need to wrap around that. So that'll be the forerunner of a formal proposal where we actually, in the second, positively, the second half of next year, will actually formally approach the state and ask for money to renovate the new school, so.
So that's...
So very exciting program.
To get in the pipeline, to see where we might...
Exactly.
But they're...
Master school.
Loaning money for rehabbing, it's not new facilities.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's pretty competitive. New facilities are rare in New England. I think more money is being put towards re-renovating existing buildings and building from scratch. Exactly. Now, naturally, when this project is presented, it becomes a, a matter for public hearings. We're gonna be dealing with the issue as well at the Board of Selectmen level, the finance committee, you know, there's gonna be a lot of public input. And there's gonna have to be a lot of support, because at the end of the day, this is going to be an additional burden on taxpayers. Because I'm sure you won't be surprised, the state does not pick up the tab for all of it.
What percent do they commit to?
Approximately, right now, fifty-one percent.
Okay.
So the rest has to be taken care of by the towns, and we can do debt exclusion, bonds, and other types of financing. But it will be a burden, and it's an inevitable, you know, burden. At some point, we have to renovate the school. The high school is the, is the one that requires, that is most in this repair. But physically, it's a building that cannot be, help the educators deliver the curriculum and the learning that they want to for twenty-first century learning, so. So the first part of this project is exciting to me because we're not really gonna talk about the physical aspects of the building. But first, what type of education are we trying to deliver? And then kind of figure out what kind of building do we need?
How can we make that happen?
Make that happen.
Physical structure.
I'm guessing that from start to finish, we're looking at a three-to-five-year process. So that was a discussion item, a very significant discussion item. I, I, without your permission, of course, I, I wasn't gonna ask Denise if she would be on this committee, but we all agreed that if she's not, she is gonna be a great resource for us because she actually experienced the building of a new school...
In Swambsk.
In Swambsk. That was a brand-new building that came out of the ground. So she's gonna, she's gonna be a wealth of information for us.
Very good. I'm sure they were pleased about that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that, so is that. But thank you.
No, I knew that you thought you were going to another meeting and could I attend? And then Greg called and...
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a great service, and I'm glad that I can be a representative of the board.
And I meant to ask you about it before. I did watch a meeting, the Mike Dempsey's committee...
Preservation?
No, the...
Community preservation?
Community preservation. We go capital planning community, all this, but, and I heard people weighing in on what's out there and what, that monies could be used for, those monies. And I heard one member talk about the Getty Station and the post office and how it doesn't look so great to have that beautiful bridge coming into Groveland and that building sitting there. And I thought that I heard that some of that CPA money could be used on that project.
That's my understanding.
I'd never heard that before.
I don't know the details, but that's my understanding.
Yeah.
No, I did, I heard that, too.
Did you?
Yeah. If the town purchases it as a, am I correct, a piece of land that would be converted into like a park or something like that, it could be used for that.
It might be. They've changed the rules, but I don't know if they just mean green space or if it has to be recreation, green space.
Well, the way I understand it, I could be wrong. If you take a park and you wanna take a park and you wanna renovate the park, you can't use CPA money. But if you wanted to build a new park from start to finish, it's available.
I heard that.
Or a parking lot situation, it's, it's available. If you say, "Well, I wanna go to Washington Ball Fields and renovate it and use CPA money", it's not gonna happen.
Right.
But if they wanted to put a brand-new playground there...
Exactly. Something from start to... Buy the property, get rid of the gas station.
Right, right. At Wa, say, Washington Park. And if they wanted to change...
If they want...
Something...
Nope, nope. If they wanna go down there, buy a piece of new play equipment, they can't do it.
They can't do it.
Nope.
Has to be brand-new.
Has to be brand-new, ground-up.
Never been before, starting from scratch.
Yeah.
All right.
Because what I, the way I understood it, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be taking money, like, town budgets wouldn't be using their budget money to do it. They'd be going to the CPA all the time and asking the CPA people, "Can we use your money?" And then the town wouldn't be using their money. So that's why they were saying startup projects only.
Okay, all right. So if we were to be able to move, I mean, I know that's privately owned, so that's, there's a lot of what-ifs and the stars have to be aligned, I guess.
And the moon.
And the moon, yeah. But I did hear, I think it was Bob Gopdel mentioned that, and then Mike did have a reply to that, so...
Right now, I think what we're waiting on the Getty Station is to get a clear, a clear seal on the cleanup, which I heard was gonna happen sometime in the first of November.
Well, I, I forwarded you something recently. Did you receive that? That they were saying they were doing more testing?
Right. And Mike mentioned that, too, at that meeting about, what do they do, boreings and drilling?
I didn't mean to say testing, more, clean, they're starting the cleanup process?
Yeah.
Because they told us one night, they thought they'd be done by November, when I was at VZ Park.
It's possible, because they're getting going in, in the next week or two, I believe.
They said it's not bad. The, the cleanup is not, it's not bad at all. It's very, very minor.
Yeah. And because when, when there have been issues there, they have been cleaned up to the certain point, but now, you know, they had to go under the building to check everything, which they never did before. And that's probably where the remainder is.
Nancy, you sent me some things. I couldn't copy them, so you probably...
Yeah.
It was Tyree, it was two or three different people that weighed in on that.
Right. They're the ones that are doing it for the, for the oil company.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good.
We've been waiting for, to get the official okay word finished before Mrs. Delafleur will, will discuss it further with us.
We can talk if it weren't a clean site.
That was my first community preservation meeting. In fact, then I joined that board. So I'm, I'm excited about what's going on.
Because Donnie was on, the representative from the board.
So I, that reminds me that the Chair of the Community Preservation Act has, would like for us to help broadcast that they're looking for proposals.
Right.
So if folks have ideas about open space or recreational space that could qualify potentially for community preservation, we have a, an open window right now. And I forgot the date. I'll have to, I'll, I'll announce it at the next meeting, but I, I can't remember the date. But it's, I believe it's the middle to the end of October, so there isn't a lot of time.
I thought I heard October fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
And Mike did urge people to call...
Right.
If they have any projects in mind. And certainly talk with him and others whether it would fit for what some group may wish to do.
Could we ask Mike to send us the minutes of that meeting for our, our next meeting as correspondence?
Sure.
If you don't mind. This way here, we can read a little bit more detail.
Right. And if, and if people are interested, Mike Dempsey is available to speak with people, whether they write to him or call him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that's a good-sized committee.
Yeah, there was quite a few people, so...
Tom Minicello was there. You were there, Joe? Bobby Gopdel was there.
You've got, you've got folks that, you know, historical interests, recreational interests, finance, you know, Board of Selectmen member, so...
There's a lot of representation.
Like I said, I've never been to a meeting, and I joined it, and that was, I got a great refresher. But if I, if we have the minutes from that meeting embedded into our packet at the next meeting in two weeks, then we can read a little bit of some of that detail. And then we can, again, rebroadcast the need for people to, you know, contact the CPA and, excuse me, CPC and submit proposals.
Right.
Yeah, great.
They may not be available, though, if they don't meet again in between time because they may, you know, not wanna give them out unless they're accepted by the board.
Right.
They have a lot of projects that are going on, they're in the process of finishing, or they're in the process of being done.
I'm sorry.
They have a lot of, you know, projects that are going on...
Yeah.
That are in the process or they haven't even been done. They're, they're in the...
They're in the pipeline.
In the pipeline of being done, which they went over that night, which Joe, you probably knew a lot about, he was there. But that was a, it was a good, watching on TV, it was good to see. You know, they're doing a lot of good things.
Joe, did, did you ever look at the website for CPA to see what's allowed? It's a good site to look at.
Yeah, maybe about a year ago. I haven't, I haven't updated myself. I will be perfectly honest, I came to the meeting just to witness it. I had forgotten that I was supposed to be on it. So I rushed to go get sworn in, and I came back out and joined the meeting. So, but it was good. It's good information. And I'll bring that forth at the next meeting then, once I have the minutes.
We had a letter, Nancy, from Eric Comper. And then everybody that, we asked that that letter be forwarded to, and I can't remember, was it zoning board?
Conservation zoning board.
Did that happen? Did they get that? Okay, good. Very good. And did we receive a response from Pat? Because we had sent him something.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did.
Didn't I give that to you last...
No.
Health, did you get the health agents?
I didn't, but I got Pat's response.
Did you, did you get a response from him?
I don't recall, no.
Don't either, Bill.
I might have got it through CVA.
Maybe you did.
Yeah, that's why.
I bet you did.
We didn't get, I didn't get it.
I just want, you know, we did ask that Board of Health got that and how many other people, zoning board, any, any board that was...
Yeah, anybody that was impacted, health, for sure.
Yeah, the Board of Health, yeah.
Building inspector, so...
Absolutely.
I know it was a week ago that I was talking to her.
I think when we wrote to Pat, we said fifteen days to reply to her.
He did reply back. I mean, I don't, I got it through an email as well as I got it from CVA.
Okay.
But the thing that I would like to see happen, we can talk a minute after you guys read the letter, but I, I'd like to see a couple of things happen if we could, after you guys read that letter.
Did Tracy leave us?
I don't know.
And, you know, with all these events going on in town and so many kids playing sports, I really think that we need to sit maybe on an off night to talk about how we're going to coordinate parks, fields, events on our town, town-owned land. So it flows more evenly, easily.
You know, that's a, that's a great idea. Instead of having those folks come in and we, let's have a, an open meeting first.
Because when they come in, different groups come in and...
Yeah.
I think all the information has to be out to everybody.
Yeah.
And whether this entails hiring somebody as a director, hard time, I don't know how we can do that, but we can certainly talk about it and make it easier so everybody has all the information they need. I know Bill went down during Pine Speedway Day. Did you go down, Joe?
No, I was not able to.
I wasn't able to get down there myself. And I think it just needs to be refined.
Right. I agree with Betty. I think what's happening as far as the, the wreck department and the fields and the ball fields and the Pine Speedway and the pines, there's no one person in charge. And there's a lot of confusion what's happened. I think there needs to be like one person in charge or one person saying what field can be used, what time it needs to be ready, what needs to be to have the field ready. I think it's a good idea. I think, and I think it's a good idea to have us either have enough information from the different boards or we talk about it amongst ourselves first, and then we, we carry on from there. But I think we're coming to a point in this town where we have this new pines property, it will be done in the spring. I think that we need to definitely take a good look at it.
It's a good idea. Well, why don't we put it on the agenda for next week?
I agree.
And what we'll do is we'll ask for the document that Denise had put together.
Yeah, I know she, she has a lot that she wants to talk about as well.
Denise will be back.
Can we have her meet with us at that meeting?
Yeah, I would like that.
Because she has a lot that she wants to talk about.
And she has looked into other communities, what they do, how they do it.
Right, right.
And...
And she knows the state law. There's a lot of law that we're not, we're not complying with. We have a lot of state law that we're not complying with as far as our parks and wreck and money and what have you, so...
Well, we might not be, we don't know.
We don't know, but, I mean...
Tracy was there on the weekend at the Pines Day. How did that go, Tracy?
It actually worked quite well. In spite of the rain, we had a good turnout. A lot of the people, because they have such great memories of the Pine Speedway, come regardless of rain or shine. It would've been nicer had we had good weather, we would've had more people. But I think those who came had a wonderful time. I know the classic cars attendance was definitely down because no one with the classic cars wanna drive in the rain. But a lot of people brought, brought the rain cars and they just covered the race engines bastic until noon when they started the engines. So it was a good time.
Very good. Thank you. We need to just get a better handle on that. We've got so many groups and, you know, we've outsmarted ourselves because everything's become so nice and fields are great and everybody wants to use them and enjoy them, and we have to...
Also, in the same token, you can turn around and have a better maintenance program as well. We, in our discussion, one of my last meetings, I was asking about doing some maintenance on the equipment. This all can be brought into, under one, you know, under one roof, under one person, or whatever. And it can, you know...
Thanks, Nancy.
Well, I mean, with your background, Bill, I mean, I think, you know, I certainly wanna learn about some ideas because I feel the same way that there's, there's a need for managing our resources, our recreation activities, and so, yeah, let's get that process started. While you were away, we've agreed to have on the agenda, next meeting, a discussion about recreation activities, the management of it. And very specifically, I'd like to take a look at Denise's proposal that she had forwarded to us a few months ago. We've written out...
Yeah, one from Pat.
Basically, two columns, two different ways that we could review...
She won't be here for that meeting, though.
That's okay. That'll be fine.
If you have questions, she won't be present. She has a commitment that she does every year and it happens to be on that day. So if you want it on that meeting, she won't be present.
I think this'll be two or three meetings anyways, and then we certainly wanna invite some of the folks that are involved. So I think it's okay to kinda do a review, you know, that night. And then, and then that'll open up the discussion and we, you know, then the following meeting, we do it again with Denise, and then the following after that, we'll invite some of the folks for their opinion.
Because...
That are involved in recreation, those that are actually running, running things now.
And it's, Nancy, we spoke about the parks and fields and the oversight and the management and, you know, who's using what, who's scheduling what. And we, and every year, it seems during early winter, people are putting schedules before us and some groups are taking a big chunk of time, leaving not enough time for somebody else. It's just, we just have to find a better way to do things.
I agree.
You know, because you get the phone calls all day long and it's, it's a hard thing to do. And it, there has to be a fee associated with some of these events now. They're just, we just can't keep doing this because we always call up people and say, "Come down and do this, take care of this, put out cones, take care of traffic." You know, we need restrooms, it's huge.
Well, you know what happens? Where the Board of Selectmen basically is in charge of all the open spaces, so it's really become a...
Huge.
A first-come, first-served. A first come, first served. So by, it's very nature, it's not coordinated, it's a competition.
It is.
Right?
It is.
So if I know, I know that whoever gets there first, so that's not a good way to manage.
No, and now you're going to have people upset if they didn't get the field when they wanted it.
Right.
There's got to be a better management system of how this is managed and how it's delegated. And I think it's about time that we do it, only because the Groveland has grown and is growing and we're growing into the pines and we're going to be growing possibly over the strawberry fields. So I think it's a good time to get this under control now.
Yeah, good idea. Good idea.
And like Joe said, we'll do two or three meetings on it and come up with some good ideas and.
Yeah, we're not making any decisions.
Then maybe bring the rec board in.
First meeting, we'll kind of review the proposals. The second time we'll have Denise also commented. And then by that meeting or the meeting after that, we'd like to have all of the people that are, you know, the hardworking people that make events happen in this town. We want to get them at, at the, at the discussion table as well and we value their input. They've been doing a lot of good work for us, the folks that do Groveland Day, for example. You know, let's get their input as well so that we're not making a unilateral decision, we're making a decision that.
Including everybody and.
Including everybody to the best of our ability.
Right.
At the end of the day, we have to do what's in the best interest of the town and be fully compliant with applicable laws, uh, including the changes and, uh, so, yeah, it's a, it's a three to four meeting process. Let's, let's start it even without Denise at the next meeting briefly.
Very good.
Do you want to talk about these letters from Pat?
Um, Nancy just, just provided us, we did ask Pat Skeener, our building inspector, to reply to us in fifteen days and I think that time has expired.
There, there is a letter there for us.
There is, yeah.
Can I, can I comment on it a little bit?
Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't see this letter, that's why I, I mean, I've seen it tonight, but that's okay.
Well, I'm, I, something's wrong if you're not getting my, my emails. I had trouble with my computer for the last two weeks going off and on, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's causing it.
Oh, remember I said some attachments I can't open?
Me, I couldn't open attachments either, Nancy.
Oh, really? Now, I scan them the same way, I always have.
I tell you, I've used the Apple computer, my work computer and two computers at home. When it says win, ma, win mail dat, it's, I can't open, no, no, nothing will open it.
Now, when I scan it, it says PDF when I receive it.
Yeah, it says PDF.
Yeah, PDF, yep. And I can't open and nothing comes up.
Word docs, PDF, but when it says that win mail something dot.
Yeah, win, yeah, win whatever.
It's weird.
Well, I don't do anything different, I just don't, you know.
I know, it's us, it's me, it's, um, so Debra did go over there and she did, um, she's our health agent.
And then you have Pat's response, I think, in your other hand?
Right, I do.
Yeah, I'm going to read this a little bit. Um, certainly, Bill, you can comment on it, but I'm going to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop because I sat on the, I'm a zoning board, um, on the zoning board, I'm only an alternate, but I did sit on the meeting the other night and, um, I'll start with the selectmen. When, when the, when the building inspector met with the selectmen, he basically told the selectmen, if I recall it right, that the building in question that they're saying was too close to the property line, there was a couple rotted buildings that needed, they needed to tear them down and put the building up where they were torn down. In another letter that came back before the zoning board, I believe, they're saying that they tore another building down or other buildings on the property and used the square footage of those buildings to put up this other building. It's strictly a zoning board issue, it's not a selectmen's issue, um, the zoning board needs to deal with it. They couldn't get their, they couldn't get in together that night, it's been postponed till sometime in the first of November. My only suggestion would be, out of this whole, um, prop, you know, this 441 Main Street property is, I believe it's time that the town of Groveland needs to get the boards all working together. I've said it for a long time and I'll say it again. Some people say the paperwork isn't coming right out of the building inspector's office, other people saying boards aren't talking to each other. I would like to propose tonight to bring the major departments, as in like conservation, planning board, building inspector, um, all the main, main, um, boards chairman in and have a workshop and sit down with all of us and talk about what we can do to implement a new process on how we can clarify issues like this. There was an issue on Salem Street in Groveland, the same situation. In the interim, I would like to turn around immediately is to bring our building inspector in, sit him down with us and say, can we take the checkoff sheet that he gives out to all the town people and ask the, ask him, we cannot demand him, because town council has told us we cannot demand him, ask him if he could give us a few mandatories. One of them might be fire, one might be conservation, whatever. We can sit him down and talk with him and see what he can do to help us come up with a better plan. We stop all this so that the right people get to the right, um, on the right properties so they inspect the properties and we don't have these situations that we're having right now. Um, I think if you talk to all parties involved, some parties are saying they weren't informed right, other parties are saying they were informed right. I think we need to do something that, like we just talked about the rec department, we need to get a good grip on this. This is starting to cost the town a lot of money. There's been a lot of, um, appeals and what have you. It's due time we do something. And I think it's out of control. Um, I'm on the, on the board, I, I see it. Um, I, I think it's an urgent thing that we need to get right on.
All right, so let me understand, if you, if you ask the building inspector to come in, he would be here with who else?
Well, the first thing I'm asking is the building inspector come in to talk about his sign off sheet. We were told by the, the council, I believe, that we cannot tell him to make mandatories on his sign off sheet. Am I correct? We can only ask him, could you please maybe make the fire department mandatory? The situation on 441 Main Street, if I, whatever the address is, it started with the fire department wanting to get a plan, they couldn't get the plan and this is how the whole thing opened up. If there was a mandatory on the building inspector's checkoff sheet that they, that they, that they knew they had to comply with fire would be all set. There's some situations where you need to get departments involved right away and it starts over there. And I understand he doesn't have to come in here and say, I want to do it, he may say, I don't want to do it. But I think we need to get a few more mandatories. I'm not saying a bunch of mandatories, I'm saying the most important ones. I would think planning board, conservation, fire, and I think he's going to have to come in and sit with us and, and see if we can get him to work with us and put some more mandatories on there. Because people are saying they're not getting the right information.
The only problem with trying to pick a mandatory is every single time you need a building permit, no matter how minute it might be for, you're going to require that mandatory sign off?
Well, I think if it was a situation where someone came in for a shed, I mean, I don't think that's a mandatory, but I know you're saying, how do you say it's a shed versus a building? Or a project? This is what we need to talk about.
On the windows.
I understand that. We need to, we need to, we need to figure it out. I mean, maybe we say over a dollar amount, we say, if it's, you know, if you're doing an addition on your house, it's going to be a minimum of $30,000. I mean, a dollar amount. If I'm, if I'm putting a shed in my, yeah, that's only going to be a permit for a minimum or my, you know, I don't know, maybe Pat, that's what I'm saying, we can bring him in or we can talk with him. I mean, he may have a better input, I'm not the building inspector. I'm just trying to resolve this and stop this confusion through the town. It's got to be taken care of. I mean, this thing on Main Street that everyone left that hall that night, they're all mad and, and there's going to be lawyers involved and we're going to be answering this again through council and it's, it's just not the right way to do it, I personally think.
Well, you were there at that meeting, so.
I was there at the meeting.
Do you feel that this is a step towards resolving the issues?
We got to start somewhere. I think we got to start somewhere and I think this is a start.
You know, I didn't see it on TV, it wasn't playing, so I wasn't there.
No, the cameras didn't work.
Yeah, I'm all for it, I don't know.
It wasn't playing because it wasn't, not that they didn't want it to play, it was the cameras weren't working that night.
It was a cable.
Right, right.
Um.
Would it hurt to have Pat come in and have a, have a, a meeting with him?
No, of course not.
I don't think it would. I think that we could talk about, you know, we're not reprimanding him by no means, we're just trying to work to, make this all work together and get this thing to run smoothly. Right now, it's not running smoothly and I clearly understand what Nancy's saying, you're not going to make people go get a fire check off if it's a, if it's a shed or if it's something minor.
You're putting on a.
Right, right.
Door or whatever you need.
Right, that's ridiculous.
My, my only concern about that meeting, though, is I think we're going to end up discussing in great detail the issues at, um, at 441 Main Street and I think we owe courtesy, if not a legal requirement, of having Mr. Harper.
Well, you can't do that. If you're going to comment about his sheet, you talk about the sheet.
His sheet, we're not talking about that. We're just talking about his sheet that night.
All right, then, okay, fine.
The agenda's the agenda, we're not going to wave from the agenda.
I'm absolutely in favor of that. Now, we're talking about a procedural issue.
I don't think we can talk about.
Not related to any specific case.
Right, I don't think we can talk anymore personally, I don't think we can talk about 441 Main Street until the zoning board does their business.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Once they do their business, then we can talk about it again, but their business hasn't been settled yet.
Right.
And, and all I can say is.
So that's still ongoing.
That's ongoing and it's been, it's been delayed till sometime in November because Mr. Harper, they're giving him the chance to go back and pull some more paperwork and do what he needs to do.
Good.
So, so, you know.
So you're in the process of helping Mr. Harper become compliant?
That's what they're working on.
Good.
All I'm trying to do is talk about, it's totally different, nothing to do with that, I'm trying to talk about how we can make the building department, one thing, one thing would be nice, and again, we could ask him, we get him in front of us, is make, see if he'd attend all the zoning board meetings. Most towns, most towns do that.
I think maybe that would help.
Most towns do it. And maybe he can, you know, once we throw a few ideas by him, maybe he could give us some answers.
So when, when they're having a discussion.
It's a good idea.
He could, he could answer.
Right. Every town around here does it. I, I have a home in Maine and every town in Maine requires their building inspector to be at those zoning board, um, meetings because they have input. They have input right then and there, you know? I don't know, you know, I don't know how it works in Groveland, but I know we can at least ask, it's not going to hurt to ask.
I think that would maybe help with the confusion.
I think we've had our building inspector for a long time, he's done a good job. I don't, I'm not complaining about him personally, I'm complaining about the sys, the system is breaking down. We're growing to a point, again, like the parks and the rec and blah, 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 it's got to be taken care of. We, we do not need any more of these complaints coming in before us and they end up, where they end up in the legal system and costing the town money. We need to stop it. That's my opinion.
Very good.
And everyone is, everyone is innocent till proven guilty as far as any other thing that's going on and I don't think we should talk about that at all.
No.
That's, you know.
Nancy, the sign off sheet that we have, hasn't that been looked at by council?
Yes.
And council says that's what you're allowed to give to a person, correct?
Well, it's an administrative type of document.
Right.
Only. Only Pat can make the decision, um, as to who signs off. It's his, his, um, under his laws, under the building code, he has full control over who should or shouldn't sign off.
Hits his jurisdiction as to what he.
And the, the paper is, it's not a legal document, he could throw it away and not even use it at all.
Mm-hmm. It's a guide.
That's what town council said. It's just, you know, administrative type of, like us giving out a permit form that, you know, if you want to fill it out, go ahead, but if you don't.
My, my.
But what I understand, what Bill is saying, let's talk to him and see if he has, he may have some suggestions.
Right.
You know, you may have some suggestions and.
Right.
Just talk it over and see what happens.
I would definitely support asking Pat to be present during zoning board meetings where something, um, needs his expertise and opinion.
Yeah. And the other thing is we, we adopted the ninety day, um, bring the department heads in every ninety days. We haven't talked to him anyway, so, I mean.
No, no.
So we have that already adopted, so we're asking him to come before us and talk about it. We adopted it. And I'm not here to reprimand anyone, I'm here just to try and make the system smooth. Anyone knows me, I'm not looking for a fight, I'm trying to put the fight out, you know what I mean? Uh, I, I just think that we need to, it's got to, got to stop.
It needs to be.
Somehow two buildings got put ten feet off the line when they were supposed to be fifteen, there's a breakdown somewhere and it's causing a lot of havoc. And I know, I spoke with the chairman of the.
Is that on this one permit?
What's that? The one they're talking about now.
Okay.
It's, it's a situation where the building's wrong again. But I did speak with the chairman of the, um, ZBA, he did call me in the next morning and he was very upset and he's seriously thinking of resigning because he doesn't have the backing. He's put in front of all these situations where he has to go back and fight them and he's frustrated. He doesn't have the backing. And he's like, you know something, I go in there, I try, I put out these, you know, I make up, I, for instance, this property, I say you got to do A, Y, and Z and it isn't getting done and now it's back before him again and now he's in the hot seat, why do I need to come down here as a voluntary position on a Wednesday night and take this? And that's how he feels and it's just not getting anywhere. And he gets frustrated.
He's a volunteer.
And he's a volunteer and he's frustrated and his board's frustrated, you got a lot of people coming in and it's making havoc between them and I just think it needs to start by, the process needs to be changed.
We ask Pat to come in, we can talk with him and maybe he's got some ideas.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
To make this flow more smoothly and, um.
It isn't going to hurt to try, I mean, in my eyes.
As long as you're, you know, congenial.
And that's where I see it, that's where I see it would need to be started.
That's, that's the important.
We've been on that track, why get off it, you know?
Right, we've been trying to.
We've been mediating and getting people to talk to you.
Solve issues and problems.
Right.
And this is, this is a big one, Bill.
I'm not trying to cause a problem, I'm trying to.
No, you're trying to.
Stop a problem and I'm trying to save the town some money and remedy it and not, and not have all this confusion and fighting and arguing and I, I think this is what we need to do, I do. And I definitely will go back to say one more time, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I definitely think we need to talk to every department head, bring them in, like we had that workshop with the ZBA and the planning board, same thing, we need to have a workshop with everyone, us and all the board heads in and talk about how we can make things run smoother. They may have ideas they could help us with.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I think that would be a good idea.
I think that a lot of the people that serve on committees and events would have ideas too, with what we need to do with management.
And people come out to volunteer their time to have a good time, for the most part. They don't come out to come to a meeting and have to go home stressed, and have to be aggravated and frustrated. They want to come out and have a good time, get things done for the town. And when it comes to the point where you start getting stressed, and you start getting aggravated, I don't like going to those meetings, no more than you guys would, and it's just not worth it. And that's why we cannot keep, you know, doing this, we gotta-
Making the same mistakes we're doing.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, we protect our volunteers that are putting good time, and putting their knowledge into all these boards. I just think it's time that we, we gotta protect them, we're here to protect them as well. You know, they're elected, or whatever, it's just appointed, or whatever it is. We really gotta watch out for them as well, and I just think that this would do them, do justice, and get this, see if we can get the system going.
Very good.
Good. I'm all for it, Bill.
But you want to try and plan for next meeting, we can have Pat come in and speak with us, can we do that?
Wouldn't our next meeting be Nancy's?
20th.
20th.
20th, okay.
If he can't make it, we'll do the-
Not a holiday weekend or anything, if the holidays before then?
Next weekend.
Next weekend, okay. Okay, on the 20th, is everybody in agreement with the-
I'm in agreement.
-building inspector to come in and talk with us?
Absolutely, we don't have to vote, it's consensus.
I think we should probably give him-
Regarding the time, the sign-off sheet?
That's it, that's it, that's it.
Yeah, real focused, yeah.
And we may want-
And also about attending ZBA meetings.
Yeah, right.
That's reasonable.
The other thing is, is we may want to give it more than a half an hour, do you think? Could it be intense, or what do you think, a half an hour?
I think half an hour's good, don't you?
Yeah, 30 minutes.
Okay, all right.
I think it's good.
We may get nothing, or we may get-
Well, we can always bring them back in if it takes more than that.
Did you say on the 20th Denise won't be here, okay. But we can certainly, again, to have a vote.
If she had input, maybe we could talk ahead of time, or she could talk ahead of time.
Okay, anybody else have anything to bring forward?
Would you mention that to her?
Yeah, well-
I'm sure you will, because I know when I spoke with her a week or so ago, she had some ideas herself as well, and I think she had gone to the building inspector and asked for those ideas, and they were working, so.
Good.
Maybe she may want to be in the meeting and postpone it for the following meeting, I don't know, we'll see. But we'll shoot for that date anyway.
Anything else? Bagnall School project irrigation lawn being brought there, I don't know if we should get in touch with John Osborne and his committee to see.
I thought that's why he came in tonight, honestly, I thought that-
Was he here tonight?
I always mess it up, no, forget it. I always mess it up. I'm sorry. But, you know, yeah.
What's the problem with mistaken identity?
Because the irrigation part in the seeding bill, does that have to be done before November?
Yeah, they give a deadline pretty soon. I don't think the dirt's even spread, but I don't know, I haven't followed up on it.
Well, I think when Bobby got some time, then he would get, he hasn't been out there.
My whole thing was if we had that-
He's trying to get paving done, he's trying to do some of the-
Button everything up before, yeah.
My whole thing would be, as far as that Bagnall project went, I would like to see the board have an outside company take a look at it as well. I mean, just don't go spread dirt and say we're gonna seed it, have a plan. Know how much dirt is in different areas, and have someone do a little bit of a, little bit of legwork behind it before they go... I mean, I'm not the board, and I'm sure they have their own ideas, but-
I would be in favor, if it was possible, whether we get it in writing, or whether Bob is able to come in, that we get the information from Bob Arakalian as to what's going on there.
And if Bob can't do it, maybe we will have to ask John about hiring somebody to take care of that. Because how long can that all sit there, is that gonna be run off or anything?
Well, they have until like the middle of November, and after that, the seed's not gonna germinate.
Right.
And the reason for that is that the request was made by Mr. Osborne. But there were concerns about the speed of getting things done, and how much could be done, and we gave it to the capable hands of Bob Arakalian to come up with an action plan as to what could be done, at what speed, and what schedule. So I'd rather hear from him, because that's gonna be practically what has been done and will be done versus potentially additional requests or unmet requests by Mr. Osborne. No offense to Mr. Osborne, he's worked very hard for the town on these issues, but I just want to get an update from the person who's responsible for getting it done.
In all, in all-
Or the person who's requesting to get it done.
In all, in all respect, I know Bob has gone down there and installed some piping already. I think he's done parts of what he was gonna do. I think the last, only thing he had left to do, I believe, was to spread the dirt, but I'm not speaking for him, but-
Well, he didn't have-
He didn't have a contract.
He didn't have a list of things he said he'd do.
Right.
He keeps getting things, requests to do things.
Right, right.
And he does what he can, but right now, he's also trying to do-
Right.
-what needs to be done at the pines, and some paving in town, and drainage. He was doing catch, having, overseeing catch bases, I mean, there's a lot of work-
The committee-
-in getting ready for winter, his equipment.
Right, the committee, I heard, only hearsay, had X amount of dollars set aside for that project to finish it. And I heard that part of that budget to finish it was going to be now used for a generator, I believe, is what I heard. And the money end of it is shy for what they need to finish the parking lot and maybe the seeding. So, I don't know if it's even our bother at this point to worry about it. I just don't think we should, unless they come to us and ask us, I would say.
Well, there's no sense in seeding if we don't put the irrigation system in, right?
Right, but I'm getting that, I think it's the committee that needs to come to us and ask us for the help. I don't, are we looking out for them, to ask them? I'm confused. Are we asking them, they need help, I mean, I thought they were gonna finish it, that's my whole point.
We just need an update, that's simple enough, we're just like-
I thought they were finished, and then they found they had some more money, so they're thinking of ways to use it.
Doing these other things.
Right.
We want to get an update, and that may or may not reconcile very well with Mr. Osborne's original requests. So I'd rather hear from the people who we tasked to get the job done, as to where they're at.
Well, the last time this was brought up before the board, the board said if Bob can do it to let him know, let Mr. Osborne know that what he can do out of that list that he had sent to everyone that Bob was ignoring, in his mind. And I asked Bob, and he said he took care of the catch basin issue, I believe it was, and that he would get to the backyard when he could.
Right, when he could, just-
Doesn't mean next week.
Right. That's why we need to hear from the person tasked to do the job, not the person wishing to get the task done.
Well, as I said, he's busy with other things right now, and I'm sure, you know, he does what he says he'll do, he just, sometimes not as fast as somebody may want him to.
I'm not concerned, I think what we can.
You need a bigger highway department if you're gonna keep having them do everything.
Right.
Or we can sell off pieces in Groveland and make it a smaller town.
Okay, is that it for this evening, 7:30?
Just, you know, and if you don't vote on this tonight, that's fine, park use permit, that they do every year for the Groveland Congregational Church fair, for the use of the Perry Park.
What's the date on that, Tracy?
Yeah, that's November 7th and 8th. Yeah, just so it's fair, so people see me on camera, I'm not trying to hide. But my use permit, I'm changing hats, representing the congregational church. We have used the Perry Park field there across from the church the last two years for parking for vendors and church volunteers to get people off of King Street. I don't know if you've ever seen people when they turn from Main Street onto King Street, they don't slow down. So I gotten the idea two years ago that if we had no parking on that side of King Street, and had people parking the park, we wouldn't have as many people crossing the street. We saved the church parking lot at the church for people who are actually purchasing things. And I have made arrangements with the police department to borrow as many traffic cones to cone off areas that I feel people should not be parking. And I will be there monitoring the parking, pretty much like I did at the Pine Speedway reunion. Yeah, keep people from parking, really don't want them to park. We actually have Pine Speedway, we had four people working on parking. And whenever the parking lot at the pines built up, we directed people behind the library, the police station, and they stopped all the parking.
Okay.
I noticed-
Like I say, I spoke with Bob Arakalian, he did approve verbally on Saturday. If you want to put off signing that until you confirm-
He told me he did, he said it's okay to do that, they've done it. And he has, he didn't have a problem with it.
And if you want to talk with the police, I have no problem now. For the last two church fairs, I contacted the police personally, both Dwight, Sergeant Dwight McDonald, and the police chief. And I've asked them if there were any issues, and they said they have.
So you don't need a police detail, Tracy?
No, no, I would be taking care of that myself.
I'm fine with it.
So, you'd like us to approve this property use permit for Friday, November 7th, 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, November 8th, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM? And use of the field for parking, this is the third year that it's been requested, and there's never been an issue?
It hasn't been, um, if you want to confirm with the road commission or the police.
I'll double check it, Bobby.
If Bobby said he-
No.
So you and Bob spoke on Saturday about this event, and Nancy confirms it?
Bob told me that today.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to, we're gonna ask you to follow the guidelines, the new guidelines?
Oh, do you want to do it all?
Yeah, so instead of us, if you can reach out to the different departments that would be impacted and just-
Okay, well, the two departments that I know have been, or that I've been told in the past were impacted, which was Bob, because he's in charge of parks and recreation.
Okay.
So I talked to him.
All right.
And the police department, because, you know, again, park, anything parking, or change or parking is something that they're affected by, like I say, it's right in the last two years.
Okay, so they said it's okay on both sides.
Like I say, I'll be borrowing a ton of the traffic cones. I mean, the traffic cones were a help modestly for the Pine Speedway reunion, and the new signs that the police department have, let's say, temporarily no parking, that's even better, because in the old days, you just had people at the Pine Speedway reunion, and sometimes at the church fair, try to parallel park in between the traffic cones. I'd be letting out tour and say, excuse me, the cones are there because we don't want people to park there. And they'll go, oh, I thought I could park in between the cones.
Oh, you need some tape.
Do you ever see him get out and move the cones?
Oh, that's bad.
We have a new, we have a new set of guidelines for making requests for use of town property, so we don't need anything from writing, in writing from Bob, because he's communicated that directly to the board through Nancy. So if you could ask someone in the police department to either provide an email, or communicate directly to Nancy, then that will satisfy our requirements for meeting the guidelines for making a request for use of town property. Because we want to make everyone abide by the same set of rules.
Same for everybody.
And that's why I figured I wanted this, it's not till November, so I figured if I made the request now, whatever-
Because otherwise, you have to get something in writing, but if Bob is all set, because he told Nancy, and that's fine, that means you told the board.
So future, you know, would you prefer to have it, we get something in writing from Old Bobby and the police department?
Absolutely.
Have an email or something?
Even an email is good, you know, if we get an email from Officer Gillan, for example, that would be great, you know, something on letterhead.
I'll make sure-
Tracy, I'll email and ask the police to confirm that there's been no problems there.
You've checked with them, you've done your due diligence.
Nobody's responding immediately.
That's the way to do it.
You know, like I say, Dwight McDonald, you know.
Yeah, we're getting out of, we're getting out of the business of us going to those entities and saying if it's okay for you to use the land. We have to have you take the ball, run with that, and provide us with the evidence that you are in compliance with the guidelines.
Yeah, you know, when I submit the property use thing, if I had a letter from Old Bobby-
That would be the way to do it.
Yeah.
It's a step you don't have to worry about.
So it's fair, so anybody else that wants to pull a permit to use property, they're doing the same thing, they have to do the legwork, whether there's insurance involved, or police, or fire, or highway department that's impacted, you have to provide documentation that you're getting-
Do you see anyone, you know, as far as, you know, like I say, in the past, it was police and parks? Do you see anyone else that I should notify on this?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, like I say, I want to do my due diligence, if there's something else should be-
No, it's a police and highway issue, so I don't see anything else.
Thank you, Tracy.